Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the P and Z meeting to order for June 13th. There's gonna be a slight change in the agenda. Mr. Jim Maroni isn't here right now, so he'll come a little later and he'll make his report to us when he comes in. First thing I'd like to ask about is the minutes. And have you all had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Anybody have any changes, additions?
No.
Nope? Okay.
No.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion then to approve the minutes.
Our motion that we approve the minutes says, Reth has here.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. And would you signify by saying aye that you approve?
Aye.
Thank you. The next order of business, since we're skipping Mr. Maroni's report, is to go directly to the open forum. I see we have a lot of people in the audience, and just so you know, when we have open forum, you can come up and speak for a limited time on any topic, but we would ask that you use the microphone, and we would ask that you state your name and address, so we know who's talking to us, especially when Joe's taking minutes. So, at this point, we'll open the forum, and if anybody would like to come up, feel free.
Hi, Pat Lawrence, 32382 Channel Road. And I am the main reason that one of the issues is being talked about tonight. I, last year, had brought up a section of a dock and put it on the access, only because for the last nine years I've been going down there with my dogs and enjoying walking them every day and letting them swim. I had a friend give me a section of the dock, and I basically brought that down, not knowing it was wrong, thinking there was a 30-foot access, and it was only, it's only 16.6, I guess. I didn't mean to disturb anybody, neighbors or anything. I brought it down for the reason for my dogs to have what they enjoy, as you all know what dogs do, they remind you every day till you do it. And, so that's what I did. I brought that down, and that raised an issue after nine years. And I pulled the dock out. I didn't mean to create a problem. All I mean to do is be able to go down each day, walk the dog, let them swim, and I'm there 10, 15 minutes, on average, at most. The reason I put the dock in was so I could possibly sit there while they chew the sticks that I throw for them. I didn't mean to do anything else. I really would like to see the access open, not just for me, although I will say, in these years that I've been there, and I'm a full-time residence at 32382, and what I've noticed is, I'm probably the only person that goes down there in the summer. Now, in the wintertime, I go there a lot, four-wheelings, snowmobilers go through it. There is another access kitty-corner from our house that gets full-time attention in the winter. Nobody seems to mind that, fish houses are brought out, it's a regular road, we get lights in our house, even the people on the lake get it daily, and there's no issue there with closing that access to them, or to other people. But the access further down the road, about a block from our house, that's the one that I'd like to see open for everybody, not just me, but I know I'm probably one of the few people that use it. And it's something that I don't see it being closed for a reason of being disturbed. We all want our privacy, I understand that. I wish, the six residents that I live on Channel Road, that's a dirt road, we wish the heck that was a dead end 90% of the time because of all the traffic from the campground and Ottawa Trail and everywhere else going through. But we also realize we have to live with other people at the same time and try to make things go. But this access means a lot to me, and I, you know, have heard other people talk about it, and I really would like to see it open. I don't plan on being a problem. John and I have talked, and I've talked with the Wagners', and it wasn't my idea to cause a problem. We don't, you know, get on boats or get off boats there, or use it any other way, but go down and just go in the water and swim, play with the dogs, and that's kinda what I thought it was for when we bought the cabin 10 years ago. So, that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to talk on that theme?
It might be, I'm John Doris. I have a cabin at 10512 Hilltop. Have you, do you know where Hilltop is? Have you been there? Hilltop, it's a dead-end Hilltop. The lots are actually pretty deep, but I think they're almost 200 feet deep. But there's a large bluff that cuts those lots in half. Then there's an access road that goes down basically about anywhere from 100 to 150 feet from the lake, and the cabins are along that road. Most of the lots there, I think all of them, are 50-foot. And it's, I think the city, somebody in the city has told me it's the Valley of discontentment, and it's because everybody's jammed in there pretty tight. And there is problem because of the bluff there, there's problem where they put garages and all this sort of thing, so. So I was the one that is next door to this access. And with the dock there and then a chair, and it just looked more like a destination. It's 16 and a half feet. It's not wide. And as Pat points out, less than a block away, there is 100-foot access that's owned by the city, I believe, city or county, went back for taxes. So there's a big access not far away. And so the 16 and a half feet is used in the winter, which I think is fine. It's used as an access coming down Channel Road. But the, we did a, we went to all of the residents, except for two, who were gone in the fall. We couldn't get to them. Every one of them signed a request to have that vacated. As you know, that didn't happen last month, and that's fine. But we were hoping, actually, the city council kind of, at least a few of them, kinda hinted that maybe it could be closed for the summer and opened up for the winter. I think there are some issues, the fire department wanted to know if they would have access. I think they said if you close it off, they might not get to it, but one of the people on the council thought probably they could cut with a bolt cutter in 30 seconds. So whether there's a gate there or not is really not a concern, but it's the traffic down in that area, it's already congested down there. My back door is actually only about 15 feet from the road, and it's just because of this hill that comes down. So, all of the people in, on the Valley of Contentment have, except for two, have signed a request. If you look at that easement, it's not, it's not on the state, it's not on the county, it's not on the city. It's plotted in the Valley of Contentment, which are the people along the road. It was done back in a long time ago, over 70 years ago, when there was nobody else in that area. It was used 16 and a half feet as boat access, basically. It, as Pat points out, has not been used in the summer, except for Pat, and Pat comes down, it's fine, with the exception of the dock, which he said he removed. But there's more and more residents coming in the area, in the valley, people, residents there who pay the taxes on the lake, would like to ask if maybe that couldn't be closed for the summer months, and then access when the lake is frozen, and there's no issues with some of the mussels and things that are on that lake. This was in the Star Tribune just a few weeks ago. And so, it's an access that's uncontrolled, can be used by anybody, anything, as far as putting boats and things like that. And I think the people along that section are asking if maybe you would consider to close that access and allow use of the other access, which is bigger, 100 feet, rather than 16 and a half feet, and is closer to the residence along Ottawa anyway. So.
Thank you, I have a question for you. Excuse me, sir, I have a question for you.
I'm sorry.
I guess I'm not sure what your objection is to leaving it as a public piece of property.
Well, there's really two. One is limiting the access to the lake for the invasive species.
But there's no dock there, so the only thing you could probably...
Well, so, so could you put a boat in there, maybe?
Probably just a canoe.
Well, canoe or boat, you don't think a boat would go in there?
No, I don't think...
There's been sand put down and modified, so it's been leveled. And so that would be one thing, and the other objection would be just the traffic coming down along the, what is basically a private road at the end of Channel Drive, and that's, I think the residents are concerned about that, and they would like to see if that couldn't be closed, just minimize the traffic to that area, and maybe send it over to the larger access, which is, again, as Pat points out, just a block away.
But there's no sign there saying it's a public access, so I can't imagine too many people even know about it.
Well, I don't think too many do, but more and more are finding out about it. You can just see from Pat's comment that the residents think maybe it could be used, and it's, and so I think it's not, like you say, it never was a problem, or I think Pat had mentioned it hadn't been used much. It is used a lot in the winter, so people know about it from the winter, certainly. And...
Is the part of Channel Road that goes on past there, and goes along the cabins that are right on the lake there, is that a...
No, Channel, Hilltop Drive itself is up on the hill.
Yes.
It's almost 200, you've been over there, you know the area?
I didn't drive up Hilltop.
Yeah, it's up probably, I don't know, 30 or 40 feet of the bluff that comes down. And so Hilltop Drive is back, and then there's this little access for the residents, which is another, maybe another 80 feet down the lake, and then this 16 and a half foot access that goes to the lake. So that, 16 and a half feet plus the access, I think it's 20-some feet for the public, for the people that own homes along Hilltop Drive, that's my recollection anyway. So it kinda runs a little wider until it gets to where the road turns, and then the private road that goes down to the 17 or so homes or cabins that are down the road.
And is that a public road or a private?
That's a private road. Yep. So, really, the private road, except for the access, the private road starts at the top of the hill, and then you come down the hill, and over the years, it's been paved and kinda leveled, but it used to be a pretty steep, steep road, but with graders and stuff, it's kinda smoothed it out a little bit. I've been coming up here since, basically since I was born. I've been right in that area, I actually bought this place because it was owned by my mother's, my great uncle Henry. Lived there full-time in the 40s and 50s, and my aunt lived next door, and so I've been coming up all this time. I've never seen that access used, but you know, there never was, you know, things are starting to grow in Breezy Point, which is great. But how many accesses do we need? This one's only 16 and a half feet, it's not, it's not a big access. And it really, I don't think would hurt anybody to close it during the summer months, the access to the lake.
Where do you put your boats in, in the spring?
I put mine at the landing.
And if that's so much better, why doesn't everybody else put theirs at the landing, rather than the one by your door?
Well, it's, I mean, that's the landing that you would use to get on the lake, I think. I think everybody uses that landing, huh?
So then, how is it such a big problem?
I'm sorry?
How's it such a big problem if nobody really uses it as a landing?
Well, they don't now, but the concern is it might get used as, becomes more aware, and there isn't really any parking there, so I'm not sure where they would park, but if they, I know in the winter time...
There's not parking, so they're not gonna use it as a landing.
Well, I would say this, that if you're there in the winter, when the, if you talk to Mr. Hayes, who resides there year-round, he says they do park along that road in the winter. He was at the hearing for the city council, and he mentioned that you can't get, he can't get to his home in the winter because they're parked along that road there, it's not wide as it comes down the hill, and so it creates a problem for him for getting access in the winter.
But then, of course, your latest request was is that it still be open in the winter, so that doesn't solve that problem, does it?
Well, I mean, there's no, maybe some no parking signs might be good, so that people wouldn't park there, and it hasn't been a problem to date. But as I say, things are expanding and growing in Breezy Point, so it's more of a concern for future than it is at present. And as I say, there's an access just very short distance away.
Are you talking about the public access on the end of the...
No, on Channel Road, there's some property there that went for back taxes. Would that go to the county or city? I don't know who owns it, but there's an access there at the end of Ottawa. Are you familiar with Ottawa? It comes kind of, it comes with T at Channel Road, that's Ottawa, and if you just, you can look straight ahead there, that's where the, there's an access there, owned by, it not plotted as part of the plot, but it's part of city or county, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name's Lenny Row, I live on 32407 Channel Road. The property that John is trying to have everybody go to is adjacent right to me on the right side. We have a lot of traffic there during the winter with houses and snowmobiles, which we don't mind. It's really unusable during the summer, because there's so much muck there and weeds that you couldn't even pull a boat up there without getting stuck. So, as far as being usable property during the summer, it really isn't. I think it was bought many years ago, not to make it a public access, just for that reason, but the other one, I mean, being about a three-quarter mile away. So, I really don't want to see more traffic there during the summer. I've already seen kids out there using it as a bathroom and things, just throwing rocks into the lake. So, for me to see more attention brought to that area is uninvited as well. I'd be looking to have that place vacated, just as well as the 16 feet, so. Just put my two cents worth in on the whole subject. I think both of them serve a purpose, and I think they should both remain open. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Dave Villon, 556 Hilltop Drive. I've owned my property for 52 years, and going up there, I spent six months up there, and up here, and we love it. Great place, good for a family. We've been real quiet up until all of the, you know, I used to take the kids out behind me, you get lost in the woods. If it wasn't for Eleven and Channel Road, they were petrified, I knew we could get out if we kept walking. But it used to be really nice, and now it's changed quite a bit. And with the change is, Hilltop bought a bunch of property, they put an access off of Channel Road into that property they bought, so that's got potential for foot traffic coming down there. When I, when we talked to the city council, some of the members thought that it was a reasonable request, since we couldn't vacate. It seemed reasonable, at least got that kind of impression, and I heard some people, that put restriction on it, on the 16 and a half feet. What I can't understand is why, you know, we pay a lot of tax, we can't homestead. I'm a member of the lake owner, shore owners, and I've volunteered at the public access to look at boats and that, and been on committees and done a lot of things over there as a lake owner. I mean, we pay the tax, we pay for the metal boil and all of the treatment on our taxes, an extra $200 on our property taxes. And so we're concerned about what's gonna happen, you know, we got these fishers in the lake, you know, that they can, people can go in there unsupervised. But that's not my point, I think, we got that property at the intersection of Channel Road and Ottawa Trail, and I hear it's mucky-muck or something. But, you know, if they really wanna access it, they're in the community, go around and develop that, put some money into it. You know, we put a lot of money into taxes, and they probably don't, they don't pay anything for the lake, I presume, because they're not on the lake, I mean, in terms of the tax. So I'd like to have you consider that other piece of property, which is wider, it's got, you know, that could be developed to 50 feet, 40 feet, 30 feet, it could be much better than 16 and a half feet, and it's independent, it's good for the neighborhood to go off on that. So I really think you should look at that and consider that, because I really think that it would, you know, be beneficial to the lake shore owners in Valley of Contentment there to have that remain contentment, as people tend to expand up there, and the campgrounds expand. We don't know what the foot traffic will be. So I just, I throw that out for it, and I'd really appreciate it if you'd consider that alternative, rather than this one only. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at open forum?
So, we'd like to make just a couple more comments. You know, I know that everybody's throwing out the amount of years that we've all been here. My parents have purchased a place on Dove Lane over 40-some years ago, and I've been coming up as a weekend warrior for, you know, 40-plus the time we moved over here and bought 10 years ago. And the thing about the access that Lenny Row had mentioned by his residents, it is very mucky. Do you think that I would not want to? A lot of times, I'm tired after work and take my dog over there and not have to walk her all the way down a block and have her run in the water. She doesn't care, she just wants to hit the water, chase a stick, but it's, you can't do it, it's way too mucky. As the gentleman before me was speaking, to develop that would be wonderful. I wouldn't have a problem with that, I don't think anybody would, it would really be nice, you know? As a resident that lives across the street from the lake, you know, we all would love to, you know, be able to be on the lake, but some of us can't, but to develop it would be wonderful. But right now, the condition of that, you can't, that's why we don't go down there, you know? And I just don't wanna have any problems with John. John and I had talked last year, what bothers me is, when I was doing this, putting the dock in, I talked to John right there and then, and I wouldn't have had a problem, because I'm not the type that wants to have confrontation and make something, you know, bad between neighbors. And I wish it would have been brought up to me earlier, I would have pulled the dock, I wasn't trying to bring in boats and get rides. So, we're a full-time resident, six people on Channel Road, between Ottawa and Jay Englemyers, the last residence, there's only six of us, and you wanna talk privacy. We would love to have privacy, meaning no dust, that road is dirt. And I'm telling you, the traffic that comes from the Hilltop Drive, the Ottawa Trail, and everywhere else, for some reason, that trailer, the people that go to the trailer courts in the summer, they like going down Channel Road, they don't go the extra mile or whatever it is to, you know, to E.J. Hoggie Road to take that road to their site. And we get the trailers, we get the noise, and I know what John's saying about having it nice. John's up 15 weeks on average, 15 weekends, and maybe a couple weeks during the summer full-time. We're here 365 days, and we notice the privacy issue too, that we'd like to have. So it's all in a sense of matter of getting along, and I think just, you know, keeping the access open is fair to us who can't get on the lake. So, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this issue or any other issue?
Nobody else? Final one. Good evening, Gary Bach in 29464 Shore of Yolene. Nice to be on the other side of the fence for once. I'll be very brief, I'm here in support of item I, setback airport zoning district. And I have read the administrator's synopsis or analysis, if you will, of that request, also the zoning administrator's input on this, and it's self-explanatory. It's needed for the airport homes, so they can, the hangar can have a wider door, in its simplest renditions, a wider hangar door. That's all they're asking for, and I'm in support of it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Nobody else wishes to speak? Okay, we will close the open forum, the first open forum, and I think we'll go back to the first item on the agenda, Mike, if you'd like to give your report from city council?
I'm so scattered, Brandon, I apologize for being late. I was gonna be here on time, and the rain decided to pour down, so I had to go home and change from our girl's softball. Joe, can you help me out? We have them put vacation, we denied it, we asked for it to be here, obviously we've heard a lot of discussion on it.
It's pretty light. I forgot I have this on. It's pretty light.
Mike, I was gonna pick you up, but I didn't see your garage door open.
Yeah.
And red light, too.
We did have the Parks and Recreation Committee put through a new CIP, so we did approve that. That's the capital improvements plan for what they wanna do, a lot of work is gonna be done with the disco golf course with that. We did also adopt resolution for national flood insurance program. Basically, we had, what, five parcels fall in that, so it wasn't a huge deal for us to adapt with that. And then we did have a request to have sewer access charge put to their taxes versus paying the upfront cost. And the last thing was, we did have the offer for airport lots that we own. We had somebody interested last year, we had them appraised, and they did not offer, I don't think they offered anything. We had an offer coming earlier this year, they withdrew it before the council meeting, and then we had another offer, which was considerably lower than what the appraisal was at, so we declined that offer.
Mission members, anybody have questions for Mike of the committee?
No.
Okay.
Again, I apologize for being late.
The next order of business is a public hearing, we'll be considering a conditional use permit for 7384 Dove Street to construct a 1904 square-foot accessory structure, 15 in height. We can open the public hearing first on that issue, and if... Okay. We will, we don't wanna open the public hearing, do we, until he's had a chance to talk?
Actually, you open the public hearing.
Yeah, you open the public hearing, let Jerry give his report.
Okay. And then, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll have Jerry give his report, and we'll have the petitioner give us his information about the CUP that he's asking for. Okay?
Again, the conditional use permit application is Stephen Cindy Ammons, 73... Oh, 7384 Breezy, or Dove Street, Breezy Point. The property is zoned R1. The request is to construct a 1904 square-foot accessory structure, 15 feet in height. Accessory structures are a allowable and a conditional use activity within the R1 district. The R1 district does limit accessory structures, or the cumulative total of accessory structures on a piece of property, based on the size of the property. This property is approximately, or it's right at two acres. The maximum allowed cumulative total of conditional use, as a conditional use of accessory structures is 2,400. There is an existing accessory structure of 484, and the Ammons are seeking to build a, another accessory building, which would bring them to the maximum of what is allowed under the zoning district. Staff has reviewed the property, it doesn't seem to be an issue, meaning setbacks, there shouldn't, there isn't an issue with impervious coverage. Staff is recommending that the conditional use permit be approved with some conditions. Those conditions that staff is recommending is that the accessory structure not exceed 1904 square feet, that it be used for personal use only, no commercial use of the structure or property, or no home occupation is allowed without amending the... or property, or no home occupation is allowed without amending the conditional use permit. The structure not to exceed 15 feet to the midpoint of the roof. The color of the siding and the roofing to match the principal structure. And the accessory structure not to be utilized as a living quarters or guest lodging. And that the conditional use would expire if granted January 13, 2018, if it had not been utilized within that one-year period. And the location of the structure to conform to the site plan is submitted with the application. With that, I would, again, the staff recommends approval with those conditions. Mr. Omen may like to speak to the issue, and I'm open for questions also.
I have Steve. And we're just, you know, we're just putting up a garage, basically to put cars in, in my boat and a couple other snowmobiles and things. It's the only reason, the garage that they put on this, you know, the property, I can't even get my truck in it, so we just want to build a garage so we can put the truck in and a few of the items in there. And, you know, the driveway will be whatever material you recommend, you know, crushed concrete or, you know, tar or whatever, and, you know, we'll totally go along with any guidelines you want to put down. Just want to utilize the extra piece of property there, have a place to put some of the things so they're not sitting outside.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment to make about the structure? Okay, members of the commission, questions, any of you?
I hope so.
Go ahead.
Okay. Do you plan to keep the garage that's there plus have this second building?
Yes, yes.
What about the shed that's next to the garage?
That's going to go.
Okay. And then you're going to put in a second driveway?
Yes. That'll be probably, there's a crown on the other and there's another driveway just to the east of it, so it'll be, it'll be right on the crown. We'll put a corner in or whatever, whatever recommendations.
Can we get him to come back to the microphone?
Sure.
We want to get you on record of what you're going to do.
Okay, well, you know, we'll, we'll put in whatever, you know, we'd like to put in a driveway so it like comes in from the house that's there and then we can like circle around and come out the other side and then.
Do you have a driveway all the way around the house?
No, no, not around the house. It's in the current driveways here. Where that little shed is, that'll be the driveway. And you'll pull in by that garage and then you can pull in and then you can back the boat in, into the big garage. And, you know, if we need a culvert or whatever the recommendations are, we will, it's going to be done by a licensed contractor, Town and Country Escavating, and the building will be by Jeremy Jensen Construction and Masonry. And I do have plans of putting, you know, trees along the side of hills too, just to make it look the way it's supposed to.
Your drawing here shows that the new building would be set next to, but back behind the garage that's there now?
Yeah, it can be, it can be moved forward too. And right now, you know, I'd like to have it kind of just back behind the garage so I can see the front of that property from my house. Because, you know, the way the house is, my, the bathroom and all that, I can't see that property from the house, so if I set it back just a little bit, I'll be able to see the front of it. But I can move it forward. I mean, it's, it's not set stone that way, but I, you know, I, it's, it can be, you know, it's, it's, we thought it'd be better to have it closer to the house than further away, so.
Closer as in?
As in, you know, towards my house, not away from the house. And then, you know, the sidewalk that would come out of the house would then shoot right over into that garage.
And is it, it's not just a pole barn that you're planning on putting up?
It'll be a pole barn.
It will be?
It'll be two-tone pole barn structure, like a steel building.
It'll have the same siding as the house?
Ah, the siding on the house is gray, the front of the house is log, kind of round. The roof on the house, I'd like to change to green, so I was going to do the shed with green and gray.
The green metal?
Green metal, like a jade green, you know, like nothing, nothing that's going to stand out. And the shed from the road, you probably won't be able to see it from, actually, you probably won't be able to see it from either of the sides in the summer. In the winter, you'd probably be able to see the green roof.
Okay, you can see the green roof on your porch?
Yep, I see, and that's kind of what I'd like to match that, because the house shingles are getting bad and I'd like to match all that roof with green.
But the, the new building will have siding on it or just be the same color?
Yes, it'll be steel siding.
Oh, okay. Okay, not just like the steel pole barns that they sell at Menards?
Ah, well, it'll be more of a fancier steel. I can put any kind of a front on there, you know, that we, we need to. I can block halfway up, but, you know, I'd like to keep it maintenance-free. So I was going to do two-tone like a Wayne's Cove steel and then steel on top. And then there'll be doors in the front and those would be, you know, with windows in, so something that'll look decorative. And then the garage will have another door to match that other building, so the whole thing will match everyone.
And the dimensions on the new building are what?
19. Thirty-two by, thirty-two by fifty.
Fifty-two, I think.
Yeah, thirty-two by fifty-two, I think.
That's what the over eight.
What are the dimensions on your house?
Ah, you know, I think it's 26 by 40.
Yeah, I was going to say, this sounds bigger than your house.
It is a little bigger.
The drawing you did is just absolutely terrible. Late at night.
I have, I have one that's drawn up by a professional.
I went over there and looked at it and I tried to figure out the picture. What the hell am I looking at? But I mean, he didn't even probably would be able to do it, I had no idea what I was...
My builder drew that up.
Okay, get a new builder somewhere.
I think so.
If not here, you can place claim on.
This is where the builder came up, the 27 by 50.
Yeah, this is...
Ideally, it would have been nice if the house garage would have been attached and raised up and widened so you could fit a vehicle in it. It would have been nice, but it just doesn't work out. I can't put my truck in the garage that's there. It won't fit.
Larry, do you have questions also?
That was the only one I had for him. I have two of Jerry. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Maybe it's in here and I'm not wearing my glasses. You mentioned the shed's going to go, should that be a condition?
Ah, it could be. That was just something that they...
Well, if you want to try to make things look nice, that would be probably a condition that would improve, you know, for the neighbors and so on that are driving by.
Easily added.
Okay.
The one across the street.
Yeah, when I looked at the property, I didn't, I didn't put on equipment, I scanned it off. I had to figure out what it was going to be. I didn't see it for a condition.
I had, let somebody else draw this up after I saw it.
And it was probably the... No, watch the basketball, you can give a small talk on it. All right, thank you.
My only question was, you're just going to use it for storage?
Just one of the conditions.
Yeah, I seen that. It's a nice size.
Anyone else, questions?
No questions for Steve. I do have a quick question for Jerry, just a application. I don't know if it was really designed or spelled out of where that second driveway acts on. Is he allowed a second driveway?
Yes, he is. Actually, one of his neighbors came over this, this morning and, and asked for the same thing, a second driveway. Yeah, we don't have a, any criteria that would deny that.
Okay.
Just as long as it's at least five feet away from the property line and it doesn't encroach on somebody else.
Okay.
But it's a wide enough piece of property.
He's got stipulations that he can do the driveway wherever he wants to, it doesn't need to be part of the commission's permit unless we want it to.
No, and typically what ends up happening is that we, we ask him to meet with, with Joe Zirdan on site and they figure out where it's going to go and whether there's a need for a culvert and that type of thing. And that's, that's part of the process. I don't think it needs to be part of the conditional use permit.
Okay, if there are no more questions for either Jerry and Joe or for Steve, we'll close the public hearing. And members of the commission, we can open our discussion of the permit application. It's for resolution PC 201702. We'd like comments from anybody, if you have comments. Anybody on commission, Roger?
I think it's okay. It's just the driveway, kind of on a hill there, but there is one right across from it, so it's safe.
Yes, that's safe, Larry. If it is at the crest of the hill, so you can see both ways.
Right.
Unlike, it would not be like a hidden driveway or anything.
It's probably safer than the one that's there.
Ah, I would say yes.
Okay, if you're, if you're going to speak again, would you come back up there?
I guess I should.
I believe the driveway would be at the crest of the hill and it would be in a safer spot than where the other driveway is.
Larry, do you have any comments to make?
Other than, I went over there, other than the drawings and, you know, clerical type error and the, and maybe the condition being changed to, to have the shed removed, I mean, I don't see any problem with the building.
Carol?
No questions.
If that's the case, if none of you have any other questions or any other things you want to talk about with it, any concerns at all? I'm going to mention to you also that if you've looked at the things that must be considered, all of the issues having to do with any safety issues, impeding the normal development, all of those issues that are from A to I, you're aware of those in terms of this property? Do you have any questions, comments, concerns about whether the CUP will meet all of those measures? No? No? Carol?
No.
No concerns?
Yes.
All right. That being the case, I'd entertain a motion to accept the CUP as it's listed here on the conditional use application.
With Larry's amendment of removing the shed.
Yeah, I'd make a motion with the amendment of adding the shed removal.
Okay, and nobody has any concerns about the driveway or anything, you're just going to deal with that later? Okay. Okay? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded then to accept the conditional use application for 2017-02. All in favor of the motion to accept the application?
Aye.
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 Not hearing any nays. I will, we will accept the application. It's been approved and any other concerns or conditions, be sure that you talk to Joe or Jerry about those. Okay? Comments about it? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
We'll have to get together, how do you want that?
Yeah, you're going to need to get a building permit and you're going to need to show building plans and that'll show that.
Oh, yes. We will open the discussion, there are several of them here, discussions about various questions that have come up at City Hall apparently and in some of our meetings beforehand. First of all, we'll open the discussion of the seasonal use of the unimproved roadway to Lake Asawina Makhi, which there was quite much discussion during open forum, and I'd like to ask, first of all, if Joe or Jerry have any comments that you wish to make about it?
Well, I just gave you a report basically saying what happened at the, the public hearing that was held by the city council and some of the concerns that have been expressed since then. You've heard most of those concerns this evening. The council did ask that the commission review whether or not some restrictions or any other mitigating circumstances might be involved with the use of this property. Other than that, it's open for your discussion.
Okay.
Oh, and I, I guess I forgot that the city attorney did give you a letter, it's on your desk this evening, talking a little bit about restriction of use.
Carol, do you have any commentary?
I'm sorry, Brandon.
Do you have any comments to make about the unimproved roadway question?
No, I think that originally if it was dedicated as public, it should stay public. That would be my only comment.
You have any comments to make about keeping it closed in the summer?
No, I think it should stay open year-round.
Stay open in the summer? Okay. Larry?
There were comments about, well, we pay property taxes, so we want, we want it closed. Well, the rest of the city pays property taxes and they probably want it open, so I mean, the tax issue is totally irrelevant. To me, it, it doesn't even appear to be as, as big of an issue. I don't think there's a lot of a boat launching down there, so I think maybe the bigger issue was, they talk about cars going by and I'm not sure closing it is going to change that at all. The fact that it can be used whether somebody walking or somebody taking a, bringing a paddle boat down there or a canoe or a kayak in the summertime, I don't think it's something that happens terribly often. I think it should remain open all year round.
Roger?
I just have a question for Jerry. That's a city road all the way up there, isn't it? It's not private road. Channel Road is, is, is a city street. When it turns to the east, or Hilltop Drive turns to the east, that is a private easement that is serving those, those homes. Right. So basically it's a public road up to that? Yes.
Well, see, I tried, I tried driving down there. I don't even know if I went to the right place. So yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I went from these old vamps and I'm going down Channel Road and then it goes to the right. Are we talking about after it turns or right where it stops there? Which part are we talking about?
If you were to continue driving straight, you would have hit the lake, correct?
Right up, if I take the, the road that I've come off of 11 and I drive straight.
That's Channel and you would have kept going straight where...
And that's the part we're talking about?
Yes.
Leave it open, that's a nice piece of property.
You just go straight and then...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I was wondering if maybe it turned, I couldn't see this on the map and it was way down at the other end, which I went down to and turned around in some soft sand.
It's small.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave my comments the same then.
I have some questions and it's based somewhat on the comments that came up in the open forum. If we are going to keep it open, then especially in the winter, when that seems to be a big issue of people are bringing snowmobiles, which I suspect means they've got a trailer and whatever and they're parking along there, if we're going to say that we're keeping that open and it's a public road for public access, do we not have an obligation to do some no parking signs or whatever there to let people using it know that they can't disrupt the neighbors who are there by parking on a road, maybe they can't get through? Somebody commented they couldn't even get to their property.
Do you want to answer?
I think that's a potential that the, the Public Safety Committee or the Roads Committee could take a look at and see if that would be a recommendation. It's actually not in the planning commission's purview to order those signs, but they could recommend that maybe signs be considered and that would go to the next committee for consideration.
How far is the plowed there? How far does the city plow?
The city plows it to the intersection of, where it intersects with the private road.
With Hilltop? Okay.
I think, actually, I think our snowplow drives in and turns around and backs out.
Can I say something?
Um, we really can't have any more comments until the second forum, if you'd like to speak then. Yep. Okay, the, the other issue besides the parking, it's not marked in any way public access. Should it be marked in any way public access? I mean, I realize the neighbors down there won't like that. By the same token, if it's open, should it be marked that there's a public access there?
I think if you mark it, it's going to be publicized and that's going to work against the neighbors.
I don't disagree.
I don't disagree. Yeah. But I can, I can understand that somebody else coming along might say, how come that's not marked? If we're able to go down there, it would create quite a bit more traffic. Another question is, somebody mentioned the extra lot on Channel Road. Has there ever been talk about the city purchasing that lot?
There's, there is a lot there that is owned by the city, that is unimproved and basically is some very.
Difficult soil.
Difficult soil. And I, I think the city got it years ago for tax, forfeited in their, you know, it's in the city's name for recreation and/or public purposes, but what the public purpose has been, has never totally been officially defined. Again, it, some people use it in the wintertime for that type of activity. I don't think any, much of any activities happen there in the summertime. Many years ago, the park board did talk about that as a possibility for a picnic table or something like that and then they found the soil so difficult to work with, they just said, forget it.
Okay. Is there an action that you are asking the commission to take or just leaving it with discussion?
Um, the council is looking for any direction that you feel might be appropriate to deal with the, the neighborhood's concerns. And I think, you know, you did give a recommendation that the road committee, or at least I heard this, may want to consider no parking signs. Other than that, I haven't heard much else.
If you're going to no parking sign, I just assume you think you might also want to say that this is a public access. The issue with parking, though, I, in my days of snowmobiling, I usually ride my snowmobile to the lake, I don't take it in a trailer.
Right.
So, I don't think it's, the parking would be a gigantic issue.
Yeah. That maybe would be something that you would take to council to discuss further?
The road committee could talk about.
The road committee.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're just going to, your recommendation would be to consider it.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, we have a second discussion on the agenda that we should take a look at and that's the side yard setback in the airport zoning district. And again, is the airport commission or the airport zoning district or whoever asking us to take any kind of action or they just asking for a discussion?
Did we jump ahead? Miss one.
The camper at 9200.
Oh, the camper, okay, yep, I didn't have that. The pictures, we have some pictures there. All right, let's, let's talk about the camper. This is right on County Road 11, 9200, County Road 11. And there has been, I, I've heard some, we don't live far from there, so I've heard some comments also. I do know there have been some questions about it and I understand that we have had people come into City Hall and request, you know, to, to have the camper there and to keep it allowed. Is somebody here that is from that property? No? Okay. What comments do you have, Carol?
Well, a couple of things. When there is temporary camping on improved residential lots, do we define temporary camping as the people or the, the, whatever they're staying in? Because, you know, can they park a camper there? Indefinitely, but people only occupy it temporarily?
That's what I would assume is camping, limited camping. It's when people use campers or tents or trailers and, and stay in a facility for a very limited time.
But what I'm saying is, you know, if, if there's a limit of like up to 14 days.
Right.
Or 30, then the camper has to leave.
Does it have to leave?
That's the question.
That, that, this is, maybe I should try and get into this and confuse everybody a little bit more and, and quite frankly, bear with me because I've been as confused about this issue as, as anybody. First of all, the, the reason it even came to the forefront is because we got a complaint. Mr. Larson, and I did notify Mr. Larson that would be talking about this, I requested that he come to the meeting this evening, that, he lives in Rochester and he didn't know if he could get here. We got a complaint that somebody had brought in a, a, a trailer and the complaint was that it was a park model and it was like this was going to be something that was a permanent fixture on the, on the property. And I should also say, nobody checked with us prior to, to, before they did that. The, the ordinance addresses a lot of things and it, one of the things it does address is storage and screening. The first question I asked Mr. Larson after receiving the complaint is, well, are you using this for camping? And I gave him the, the rules for camping and his response was that he could comply with those rules and it wouldn't be utilized anymore than what was allowed by the, the ordinance. That gets us out of the camping part, but if it's a permanent structure that's going to be there for a long time, does it become a guest quarters? Then we get into what is a guest quarters and, and guest quarters is defined as something on the same lot that is less than 750 square feet, but we don't really know if this could qualify as a, as a guest quarters because we don't know for sure whether the minimum size of structure pertains to a guest house. And that's something that I think we have to probably define down the line, whether the 26 by 26 is a minimum size for a guest quarters or, or whether we throw that out and make an exception for guest quarters. I, I don't know how to deal with that. That's partly confusing the issue. The, the other thing is that campers typically are stored on, on lots when they're not being used by somebody, you know, typically that somebody has one at their house, they take it to the campground and then they bring it back after the weekend use and that type of thing and it's stored on the lot. And the, the storage and screening section of the ordinance addresses 30 feet or less as far as what you can do. This camper happens to be 38 feet, which kind of puts it in Never Neverland. But, you know, and basically it says that campers over 38 feet can't be there and then you get to another section of the ordinance that says, storage on lots in excess of one acre in area or storage that is hidden from the public waters and rights of way and during leaf-off conditions are exempted. I think I could make a case that the camper is okay to be stored there because the, the lot is over one acre in size, but is that how the planning commission would, would look at that? It's, it's so convoluted and there's so many sections here that could deal with, with the, the issue. Again, I think the issue was prompted probably because of some neighborhood considerations. Does he comply to the ordinance? He could, probably doesn't, I don't know. It's, it's confusing and gray as far as I'm concerned and, and I really need some guidance as far as how to handle it.
Comments from Larry, Carol, Roger?
Well, would he need a conditional use permit to keep it there?
If it's considered a guest house, it would be, he would need a conditional use permit. If it's considered just a camper that somebody has parked on his lot and is storing on his lot, I don't think so.
But then, would he have to move it after 14 days?
He's got a little sign, he says, it's, it's storage today, it's camping tomorrow and without ever moving, not doing anything and that's probably not right. You get into one of our other little questions in here, you, you've got to deal where a fish house can be stored, but it can't be resided in. Maybe we've got to clarify the ordinance to include this with the fish house. Because number one, I went over there and it's hooked up to water, it's hooked up to electricity, the license on it has expired. It's being stored there and, and number one, the license is, can't be expired, even to store it, I don't think. And it's a year old, February 16 is the date that's on it. So, that's a kind of a no-no. But I think we need to clear up the, the ordinance a little bit to say, put a storage situation like this to include like when you store a ice house that if you're storing it, it can't be used for living quarters.
But can it be used for living quarters for the 14 days and, and conform to limited, limited camping?
Um, that's, that was one of the issues that I had too, is it's permanent storage because it's up on blocks, you know, it's got the bump outs, they're out, like I said, it's got all its hookups, it's ready for, for usage anytime. What are we going to go over there every week and find out if somebody's sitting in there? I mean, that's a maintenance problem for us too. How do you determine whether it's being stored or whether it's being camped in?
I, that's the issue for us, more than anything else.
In other words, he treats it as a guest quarters, but he doesn't qualify as a guest quarters. I mean, you're right, it's murky water. We need to clarify it.
And is it even okay for him to have hooked up to water, sewer, electricity and whatever else he's hooked up to?
It's on his private, it's, it's on his private residence, I think he's got the right to extend, he's got an extension cord over there.
But then it's not storage anymore, is it?
Yeah. Well, it's limited camping as far as I'm concerned.
But then it's limited camping the whole summer.
Yeah.
But if nobody's in it, it's only being utilized for those.
Is your house not being utilized when you go to church? Because you're not in it.
I think the dog is there, yes.
Okay, I don't have a dog.
Temporary camping to me would mean whatever you were camping in was gone after the 14 days. Whether it's a tent or.
And you take a weight or whatever. Yeah.
And we noticed from the pictures, but I also noticed when I was driving by that he also had a boat there and another fifth wheeler or something.
Fifth wheel trailer.
Yes. So, is he storing all of those things there and then do they fall under the storage issue? We either need to, it would seem to me, clarify the ordinance or have a talk with this gentleman or both.
Like how much stuff can you store?
Yeah.
The pontoon isn't there today, I don't believe.
Could not, could not.
There, there wasn't a boat there today.
Yeah, or yesterday.
And I'm sure he puts it in and out of the water, you know, like anybody, or if they've got a boat on their property, but, you know, he's got a lot of stuff there and it seems to me we probably, we need to have some clarification about what exactly his plans are. Larry's point is a very good one, if he doesn't have a permit or doesn't have a license, that's another bull issue.
I'd like to hear what Mike has to say about it.
I'm so glad this is in front of you guys. Define abandoned vehicle. Is this a vehicle or is it, is it a camper? If it's a camper, it needs to be licensed. You know, Larry brings up our ordinance regarding fish houses. Our fish houses are to be stored, I think actually, are all stored, supposed to be behind the front of the building.
Yeah, in the, in the rear yard and this, this would qualify as a rear yard.
This would qualify in the rear.
Yep.
So, he'd meet that, I agree with Larry on the, on the licensing as I mentioned, but then if it's licensed, it is a camper and if it's hooked up with water and electricity, that's not really storage or it's not, it's not storing something and now becomes a guest dwelling. So, I think we actually have a few things that we can clarify in our ordinance. Maybe from the guest dwelling, if we have to, if we want to meet specific guidelines with those, just to forefront on any other things that might come up. I mean, if we have all this in front of us, might as well address it. You know, if somebody does park this, you know, if the boat's not up to date on license, are we going to go look at it? No, but if it's causing, causing a nuisance, I think, you know, that's when we start investigating. With the slide outs out, I mean, it's, in my opinion, that's, that's a use, that's not a storage. You can start with the slide ins.
So, what you're saying is that if the slide in, if the slide outs are pushed in and the electricity is, and, and the water is, is unhooked, then it becomes storage?
Storage for what?
Just a camper.
Storage, a camper?
Yeah.
That's not currently licensed to the city and the state?
Um.
Is it a camper at that point?
Okay.
Because you can't move it off the property if it's not licensed.
Okay. The, the question, and I'm playing the devil's advocate. The question is, if he licenses it and he disconnects it from the, the water and the, the electricity and pulls in the, the, the slide outs, then is he just storing it there on his property?
But even that should be limited, right, according to our?
It is not limited as far as I read this because it, anything over an acre is, is an exception.
Okay.
Okay, now, is this correct that he has 1.04 acres?
Yes.
So, he's very slightly over.
Well, you know, slightly, I'm.
Yeah, I know, but it's.
Over, so close.
I think the, I think the real question is, do you want to allow this type of activity on large lots?
No.
Probably not.
Now, the other thing that you have too is, is in 153065, I don't even know how to get here, is it E to C? All boats, trailers, recreational vehicles and other recreational motor vehicles is defined as state statute, stored outside more than 21 cumulative days per year shall display current license on, it's the current license plate.
Is he saying that it's guest quarters? He's trying to.
He is telling me that he has friends that come and use it on occasionally on a weekend.
Oh, it's, so it, you were questioning whether we could call it guest quarters rather than.
I'm, I'm questioning it because, again, I'm trying to read in this ordinance and trying to figure out whether it's something that's allowed or isn't allowed. I'm not sure. There's, there's not a black and white answer here. I think the only thing that you've identified black and white is the licensing part of it.
Good thing I went and looked.
Yeah. I took pictures of it and I did, I did look at the license.
I had to go back the second day because I didn't think of it. I think that we could require him to disconnect water, electric and suck on the sides and then unless we change the ordinance, I think he, he meets the requirements, we'd be able to store it there and then when he wants to camp, he pops them back out and hooks it back up. If we wanted to change the ordinance to make it similar to fish houses, then that's what we have to do if we wanted to, we want to change that, but otherwise, he's kind of within the law if, if he actually does go make it pure storage.
As long as it's licensed and it's just kept on the, on the property.
Yeah.
So, anybody with an acre lot could pull a 38 foot in?
But there's a, there's that exception for the one acre lot, so we, he kind of got his neighbor there.
Do you think the original intent of that one acre was always to include or? Or do you think it was to say, and, or having some additional verbiage, and where storage is not visible from other properties?
I think it was as intended. I think it, it, it did mean the or.
So, if you had a smaller than one acre lot.
Then you've got an issue.
Green everything. Green everything?
Whether it, whether the intent was that or not, what we have to deal with is the or.
And it is visible from the road, clearly.
Very visible.
Very visible. So I guess what I'm hearing here is, and we can all voice our opinion, but it seems to me that we're asking the city council to perhaps look at rewriting the ordinance or adding to it or changing it.
I think past experience would tell us that it's going to come right back to us and, you know, maybe we have to think a little bit and do some noodling to figure out, again, do we want this type of activity? Do you want somebody to have the right to store a larger camper on his yard?
No. So that the intent is that we probably need to change the ordinance and we need to do that. You've got some ordinance changes you're talking about, come up with, can we just add one more into it? You haven't had the public hearing yet.
We've got to find a solution first.
Yeah, we may be out a couple of months.
Okay, well, would, is that something that you want some help writing, researching?
I think we'd like some ideas.
I think the changes either have to be, at least the number of boats, campers, extra things that you're storing, or you go the ice house route and say that you can't limit it, whether it's a boat or an ice house or a camper, if it's being stored.
But yet, limited camping is allowed in that district. Limited camping is allowed on improved lots. And are you saying that type of activity can't go on? You're not going to allow any type of camping on improved lots?
But that's 14 days.
But can the item be both limited camping and storage? I mean, again, if you pulled it out of the weeds and put it up on his driveway and camped it, then he's moved it and it seems to me he could do that. Or put up a tent or whatever he wants to do.
So are you saying that he could just move it 10 feet one week and 10 feet the next week and everything is?
Well, I mean, again, that's the way, that's the way things are written right now. If you're allowing limited camping, then you're allowing limited camping.
I would suggest that perhaps between now and the next meeting, we all take some time to do some research, look at some ordinances from other cities dealing with this whole range and bring them back to the next meeting or give them to Jerry, one or the other.
I think, I think there's some, the one thing to remember is that if you do something here, you're affecting not only this piece of property, but you're, you're going to affect all the pieces of property. And there are some folks that have larger campers that aren't utilizing them as a guest house per se or whatever. And you're going to be affecting what they can do. And there are some boats that are going to be over 30 feet. And can you store a boat on a, more than one acre? It just, it's not all cut and dried, it's not clear.
What if we just took away the exception? The exception, you know, the exception for one acre lots.
Well, that's.
So if a guy's got 10 acres, you don't let him store a 38-foot boat either, 38-foot camper. Outside, I mean, if he has a pole barn, he can put it in there. Helps the pole barn people.
I think we're not going to solve this tonight.
I think in summary, the thing I really have to question Mr. Larson about is the licensing of the, the current licensing, the fact that it doesn't meet the ordinance because it's considered an abandoned vehicle.
That's an easy fix for him, however.
That's an easy fix, yes.
And I think the water and electricity.
Well, yeah, and that's an easy fix too. I mean, it's an extension cord in a hose.
But that would, that would help you answer the questions that you need answered now. And meanwhile, we could look at addressing some of these issues in the ordinance.
Right.
And making the changes recommended after we've done some research with them. We're going to get more of these requests. I mean, this is not going to be an isolated incident. Anyone else comments on? Okay, then the next one is the side yard setback with the airport zoning district.
Can I ask one quick question before we move on? If we had a property, if somebody wanted to park an RV or a trailer on, it's unimproved to camp, camp, never mind. Okay, can't answer my question. I told you I'm a scatterbrain, Blake.
Especially a 60-footer.
Okay, we have some discussion on the airport zoning district. We did have a comment during the open forum. Anyone on the commission have some remarks they'd like to make?
Give a side back, side setbacks.
Currently, they're 15 feet.
Was 15 feet for residents, everything else?
15 feet on either side, period.
That's just the airport or is it everywhere?
Well, that's, we're just talking about the airport district. There's some zones that have 15 and 10. There's, I think there's some that even have 30, depending on size of lot. But in the airport zone, it's 15 on each side.
Okay. So the question is, is, should they be an exception to others that only, that have something else?
Well, airport has its own zone and it's been suggested that larger hangars could be built for, if we reduce the setback, the side yard setback in that zone.
Well, in a residential area, if you make the setbacks only 10 feet, they can have larger houses too, somehow is that different? Except you don't have to put an airplane in those.
No, you don't have to put an airplane in those. The lots are only 75 feet wide, which also causes some problems. So you'd end up with, at 15 feet, 45 feet, you can't build a 50-foot hangar. And so the suggestion was made that we go to a 10-foot side yard setback. You know, my, my problem with that is not so much the setback, but rather what it does to impervious surfaces. And obviously, people have to build in accordance to what's available in the lot they're building on. And so that's something that needs to be considered. But a 10-foot side yard setback is workable. You could get a larger hangar in, you just have to be cognizant of the fact that impervious surfaces are limited 50%.
In other words, if you're close on that area, you just might not be able to do it even if the ordinance says 10 feet.
Well, and I was looking at the maximum building envelope on that lot. You know, most people are not going to build to the maximum. They'll probably make it a little shorter, but they want it wider so they can get an airplane in or whatever.
Gary might have the answer to this one. Is there a safety issue with buildings maybe, of course, the other one, hangars are all, it's only the one, probably one empty lot that we're talking about. But is there a safety issue where you get less wind if you've got them a little closer together or do you get more wind because now it whips through?
I wouldn't see a safety issue at all. The issue is, who you can get a wider wing aircraft in the doors? That's the issue. Utilizing the lot, utilizing the lot to build a better airport hangar. And these gentlemen are both aviators, as I was. I would defer to the cliff, number one.
If anybody else is going to speak, they're going to need to do it to open forum number two.
You're right, I'm sorry.
I wondered about the safety issue in terms of fire with the buildings close together. Is that not an issue at all?
They, the type of buildings that are being built, they have to conform to a different set of building codes than you would a normal house or a normal garage. And there's, actually, because of the fuel and those type of issues, there's double layers of sheet rock that are required for fire protection and stuff. So that can be taken care of. But, you know, the closer they get together, the more of those issues come into play. But there's, there are building code issues that address that.
And are you, the two of you have the opinion that impervious coverage would be the major issue, even adding, you know, five feet on either side? I mean, it's five feet all the way down.
Well, it's only, it's only an issue if someone wants to build to the maximum building envelope. You know, then they become very limited on their driveways and their approach to the airstrip. You know, if they reduce the size, so it's not, you know, the whole building envelope, they can probably make it work without too much of a problem. 10 feet between the property line and the building would give you ideally 20 feet between buildings. So you've got plenty of access between the buildings for whatever emergency that might occur. So I, you know, I don't think it's a particular problem in terms of reducing the setback. The only issue that I see is, you know, you're starting to bump up against that other standard.
That shouldn't be a problem because if you're going to bump up against it, you just say no. It's not a problem. Totally.
There's another way to address the impervious coverage. The driveways could be built to pervious standards. We've had to do that with a few houses that were maxing out. I know the property owners are not going to like what it costs to do that, but that's going to be the cost of the business. I, you know, this, this area is 50% impervious coverage because there's sewer there and it's treated specially. There aren't a lot of other areas in town that get 50%. The max is about 30.
How many lots are we talking about here?
Not very many.
Four going to open, okay.
We own, the city owns three lots?
Two and a half. Well, yeah, we do probably own three.
So is it only one or is it?
Well, there's four lots in addition to those. So seven, so seven, seven buildable lots.
That could be, that could take advantage of the wider.
Yes.
Okay.
The purpose would be so they could build a bigger hangar for a bigger plane. Is this airport good for bigger planes or is it not?
Airport road here, airport manager. It's not necessarily for larger aircraft. It's, hangar rash on a corner on a 45-foot door is pretty tough. It's so easy to bump the wing. So it's nice to have the room to be able to maneuver it in and out. Not necessarily bigger planes, just. Plus, the structural part is the sheer strength. If your building is as wide as the door, you don't have the strength on the end, gable end. So if you've got a little wall there, you've got a much sturdier building. That's probably half of the reason.
So I would presume that if this is a request, that you would, we would need to have an ordinance come to us that we would pass.
Yeah, if you'd like me to amend the ordinance that we're going to talk about later and include this provision, we can hold a public hearing at the next meeting and discuss it further.
Okay. What would be the recommendation and of commission members?
Say 10 foot would be, change it to 10 foot is the way I would say it.
Appreciate your consideration.
One question I have, and I'm sure this is not a big issue with our sandy soils, but with the setbacks being reduced, rain runoff issue, since it's, I mean, it's on city sewer, we got curbing gutter.
Yeah, we've got storm sewer there too. I don't think it's an issue.
Plus, we have 27 acres on this side.
If you got 10 issues, you only get 20 feet then because each has got 10. It's still pretty wide between.
It is.
And it's only if you're building with two lots that are unimproved. If there's one already unimproved, that's already.
Yeah, if you're going next to one, you've already got the 15, so then you're not making that down, okay.
Still have a nice yard, you know.
Would you like to make a motion then of what our recommendation is?
I don't think you need a motion.
No, I think you just consensus. If your consensus is to include it in the ordinance for next time, we'll do that.
I would agree with him.
I don't have any issues. I would raise them, but I think they've been resolved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a number of changes that are being recommended by staff or at least, the two staff people over here, recommends, recommendations for some ordinance changes that they would like to discuss with us?
Sure, three of these four we've already talked about and the commission has wanted to make those changes. The first, I mean, why don't I go through them? The first change is just a, well, actually, the commission has not talked about this. We found an error in the resort commercial district that no longer applies and so that should be stricken. I take that back, that was section two. Section one, accessory structure size, the commission did talk about that. That was in relationship to the accessory building with the over, large roof over a patio area. And we discussed that we'd like to make that change. On section three, the screening, this was suggested after the issue with the Finger Hut trailer. And it was just to further clarify the issues with regards to storage on properties. And then section four is signs allowed without a permit. With the recent airport days, there was a banner that was placed up six, maybe eight weeks ahead of schedule. The ordinance provided for one week. In dealing with that issue, we got no cooperation, let's put it that way. I did describe the fact that they felt one week wasn't enough to advertise the event. So just arbitrarily, we've suggested to go to 30 days for that event. And if you'd like to go more or less or whatever, that's up to the commission. But I think 30 days is a reasonable period of time to advertise an event for a nonprofit situation. So from that perspective, I think.
30 days is too many.
30 days is too many?
Three weeks.
Three weeks, 21 days? We can certainly do that.
I have a question on that since we're talking about signs once again.
Yep.
We have five, is that what?
That is correct.
Okay, so have you driven by the corner?
Not lately, but.
Okay, there are five signs out there. There's four banners plus the permanent sign that is in front, plus that portable sign that they call portable and is supposed to be not permanent, I would guess. But that is out there all the time advertising one thing or another.
Portable sign is included as one of the five, but the permanent sign, did they get a building, or a permit for that area or anything, do you know?
Yes, I believe they did.
Okay, so that would not be.
That would not count then?
Yeah.
Okay, because that, one that's portable is, I mean, it's there all the time. It's advertising one thing or another all the time.
I know Mike has been pretty sensitive about complying.
And usually, it just takes a call, hey, how many signs you got? And they'll, they'll take them down right away. They're pretty good about it.
I'm surprised about the advertising the May 6 event that it was up that long because like you say, they've usually been.
The airport days?
Yeah.
He put it up as soon as he got it and he refused to take it down. And then the board actually gave him direction to take it down and he wouldn't take it down.
So if he took it down for a day and put it back up?
Well, it was still, it's still supposed to be seven days ahead of the event.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Not six weeks ahead of the event. So, all right, why don't I do this? I will call a public, or we'll put together a public hearing, I'll amend this ordinance and I'll include the side yard setback for the airport zone and we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments about that? We also have a note here, do we need to address this, Joe, from White Birch, asking to extend their preliminary plan?
Yes. Yes. They've requested an extension of the, their subdivision and also the conditional use permit expires after one year, even though they're tied together. And we thought rather than just address the subdivision, we should really address conditional use permit as well. So I've given you resolution 1705 for your use in granting that extension.
Okay, do you all have it in front of you? It's the letter from White Birch and then it's followed by the resolution, which is resolution 1705. Have you had a chance to look at all of the documents? Is extending it for another year, which is allowable according to our current ordinances? Okay, then I would need a motion to that effect.
Well, we have to just extend it a year? I'll make a motion to extend it a year.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of extending this? Is there any other comments at all?
They're limited to one extension, right?
That is correct.
All right. All right.
If the motion has been made and seconded, and nobody has any other comments, then I ask for a vote. All go in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
If there's no one opposed, motion's passed. Joe or Jerry, do either one of you have anything else you want to talk about?
Just a heads up on the census indicator, this is preliminary, but we've gained 16
Heads up, again, next week, or the next month, you're probably going to have a public hearing for the...
Convenience store.
Convenience store, that's coming to the forefront, and potentially, the 11-acre parcel that's off of Weaver's Point Road.
Convenience store on Redchamp.
Yes.
Okay, no other comments from you? Okay, then, I would open the second forum, if we have anyone who wishes to speak at the second forum. Nobody wants to talk, okay. I'm going to close the second forum. Is there any other business, either from staff, council, members?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I just, I was going to clarify the snow plowing.
Why don't you come in?
Just, as you all mentioned, on the snow plowing to Hilltop, I just wanted to point out that Hilltop is at the top of the hill, and then the, there's a resident, there's 16 and a half feet, plus the easement that comes down at the bottom of the hill. And the snow plow does come all the way down to the bottom of the hill, but they're actually on easement, and on private property when they do that, just, just for your information. That's not a problem. I think the residents like that, because it brings the snow plow down to the, where they can then plow their own entryway.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. If there's no other business, or no other issues that have come up, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 8:34.
Good job.
What happened to...
He's right. He was right. Larry was right.
Larry was right.
Good job.
Well, it is, one of the things that I will, in fact, I'll wait till this is turned off. One of the things that I have noticed before is, and Mike can address this, I'm sure, the P and Z's have traditionally here gotten to be casual, or informal. Please do. That's correct.